Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 14th County Council Meeting to order. Let us stand by our implications. Please.
Let us pray. I'm just kind of, Father, we do acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our being. We understand that the earth is yours and the bones thereof, and we thank you for appointing us as servants to this county council. As we begin our meeting tonight, we invite your presence and ask that you give us wisdom, understanding, clarity of mind to be able to do the work that you've given us to perform. We ask your blessings upon everyone under the sound of my voice and all of their families that are represented. Continue to bless our county administrator and his staff, that they will continue to do the work that you have tasked them with, and that we will be good servants for your good and your purposes. These are all blessings we thank and ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance is derived from the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
With approval, we move to the second floor. Would you approve our agenda and discussion during not all the papers, please say aye. And all the folks. We have a motion to approve our minutes on our meeting for Tuesday. I so agree. Sir. We move to the property secretary, would you approve our minutes? Any discussion during not all the papers, please say aye. Land use plan as RZ 2323, this room.
[inaudible]
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 It's not out here online.
It's online.
What you do, Bill?
I look down.
It doesn't like you.
Oh, no. It's willing to update.
Let me try to get, I don't know, even on the format, and then I'll just get this video.
Technology making life easier, one computer at a time.
[inaudible]
Nothing.
Overhauled.
Overhauled.
Nothing.
[inaudible]
Where would you have the chance?
Not a mistake.
Even if I need to have a good gun?
Oh, my goodness.
That was a good one.
Okay, I'm gonna have to.
All right.
Yep.
RZ 2323 is Race Track Road. This is a county request, and the county is the applicant, has the property owner. This is a request to rezonate just shy of 75 acres from agricultural conservation to have an industrial. Next slide, please. This is the property in question. It has approximately three quarters of a mile of frontage on the railroad. It's just south of the Millamalefus site on Race Track Road. It is more commonly known as the Gibson site. Next slide. As you see today, it is an agricultural farm field. It's not being currently used. This rezoning is in an effort to make the property market ready for future industrial development. Next slide. As you can see, to date, the heavy industrial zoning has been on the north side of Race Track Road. This will be the first site to the south that is being brought into the heavy industrial zoning district. The areas around it are predominantly agricultural farm fields to the southeast and west. There are some family residential properties in proximity, but by and large, it is a Race Track. Next slide. The county acquired this property in August of this year. They had a two-year purchase option on the property. As I said, it has approximately three quarters of a mile of rail track, rail frontage, which does make it ideal for industries that need to use rail for transportation. There is a due diligence process that's being gone through right now with the Development Board, getting all of the permitting for environmental taking care of to make this a certified site for industrial development. Next slide. As you'll see in the 2040 land use plan, this property is in our industrial development area. It is designated for future industrial development under the 2040 plan. This is part of a larger swath of property that, prior to Continental Tire being brought into the community, decision was made by both the city and county to designate this as a future industrial development area. This is near the Pupitalago Sewer Treatment Plant, several other industrial properties to the north and to the west. The request to rezonate this property to heavy industrial does comply with the Comptender Plan. Next slide. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. It does comply with the 2040 land use plan policy, and this is the county's only publicly owned property that's a greenfield site that does have direct access to rail line. And how do we answer the questions you may have?
For a first reading? Sir. We have the property seconded, and we have first reading on RZ 2323. End of discussion. During not all the papers, please say aye.
Aye.
And all the folks. RZ 2323, first reading is passed. Or just number 2301.
It's gonna take a little more effort. As Council notes, hey, this is the vice chairman. Okay, let me see if I can bring it up here. This request, it is being brought forward at the request of Council to make amendments to the zoning development standards ordinance to make solar power facilities, particularly large-scale solar projects, a special exception use in the districts to which it's currently permitted, as to the [inaudible]. [inaudible] The request impacts several areas of the zoning ordinance, which is specifically what you see in this huge list in the title. But functionally, what it does is makes accessory solar power facilities conditional uses in the districts where they are allowed, and then it makes the primary generation facilities special exceptions in the districts where they're currently allowed as conditional uses. And then we've got new associated language. I'm gonna walk you through that process. There are three areas of concern that have been discussed related to solar development in the county, extensive area of conversation amongst Council themselves. The need to ensure that future projects don't adversely impact the community and its character. The need to ensure that the use and site plan approval provide out of the public notice to property owners that are potentially impacted in proximity to the site, and a venue for them to voice those concerns. And then the need to ensure removal of solar facilities at their end of life or cessation of operation, and a decommissioning plan that's backed by a financial instrument. A little bit of background, in 2016, our first solar regulations were developed. At that time, it was done as a conditional use requiring staff level approval in the AC, CP, LIW, and HI zoning districts, and they were only subject to specific review criteria if they were within five millimeter miles of Shaw Air Force Base, Point Set Electronic Combat Range, and Central County Airport. This map shows you the areas that are within five millimeter miles of those three locations. So the review criteria that we established as a community would only apply to things that were within those circles. Outside of those areas, if it was the appropriate zoning district, it was still a conditional use, but only with the general review criteria and not specific criteria. And we're talking about large-scale solar facilities. This is what we're talking about. It's large field of photovoltaic energy collectors, and by and large, in today's development, you'll also have these as battery banks, which are the buildings that look like Conexes at the front. These are just some pictures to give you some reference of what we're talking about. Our ordinance does define the difference between a primary and an accessory system. Functionally, a primary system is a system that's purpose is to generate power specifically for the grid for utility provider. Accessory facilities are meant to generate power specifically for the industry or the property owner which they're located, either to offset their own power generation or provide heating and cooling, and they are only for that particular user. Within our current standards, the regulations that you see listed on the screen and in the following pages only apply within their five millimeter miles of the Shaw Air Force Base, Point Set Electronic Combat Range, and Central County Airport. They really speak to setbacks, development standards, and decommissioning plans, but in our 2016 regulations, which we're currently operating under, there isn't a financial instrument for removal, and there is no requirement for a public hearing for these uses to be approved. And so this is a lot of not wanting to read all of these to you, because they're just the standards. The nuts and bolts of what we're doing with this ordinance amendment is to change the review criteria. This is a brief outline of what those changes include. We would make accessory photovoltaic energy systems, the ones that are designed to operate on an individual property on our site to offset their own usage as a conditional use in the AC, CP, LIW, and HI districts, where we adopt the previous review standards to be part of the accessory review standards. And then we would make primary photovoltaic system a special exception in the same zoning district, where we establish new review criteria that does require a public hearing in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. We would modify the established conditional use for review criteria that would be specific to the accessory photovoltaic systems I previously said. And then we would establish special exception criteria that expands the language to modify setbacks from 50 feet from roadways to 200 feet from roadways and all over property lines, require a 50-foot wide evergreen buffer along the road right of ways, and between development sites and avoiding residential uses, require the planting and native vegetation of grasses in the CP and AC zoning districts as ground cover as opposed to covering the entire site with gravel and making it pervious, and then we look at more rigorous decommissioning requirements with financial surety for primary system. Just for your point of reference, special exception reviews require review based on these criteria listed in the ordinance. They are subject to the terms and conditions set forth for those used in the zoning district. And permits for special exceptions are evaluated by the Board of Zoning Appeals based on three specific criteria. One of the special exception complies with all applicable development standards contained elsewhere in the ordinance, including landscaping and back regard, off-street parking and dimensional requirements, is made as part of the review process for a solar facility. They will be required to submit plans to address those landscaping, buffering, and setbacks standards. The special exception will be a substantial harmony within the areas within which it is located, and the special exception will discourage the uses for surrounding properties for uses that are permitted by right. Generally, these issues of substantial harmony, compatibility, are addressed through setbacks based in buffering, landscaping, and other things that mitigate impact visually and aesthetically at this particular type of use. And then the third criteria for a special exception, that every special exception, regardless of what it is, has to go through, is that the Board of Zoning Appeals can impose additional stipulations, conditions, or state or hurts as in its judgment, or enhance the setting of a special exception, and that the conclusion of the review of their request, the board can approve the application's specific modification or disapprove the application. And if they approve the application, the Board of Appeals directs the zoning administrator to issue permits contingent on specific modifications imposed. So this is the area under that review standard where there are issues that are brought up, particularly by the public, that can be addressed by changes to the plan, that the board can approve it based on modifying it in response to that public input. So what specific criteria are we looking at implementing? For primary systems, we're looking at all ground-mounted systems will be setback 200 feet from all property lines. It will be interpreted to apply to all improved areas associated with the property or with the project. When I say improved areas, I mean areas that they're clearing where they're intending to put any sort of ancillary structure that's a force for the facility. And all access roads, storage, and storage areas will be established on a 30-foot minimum easement to the public right of way, so that does ensure adequate space for large vehicles if they need to, to pass each other at the same time. But all of the ground-mounted photovoltaic systems will be enclosed by a perimeter security fence with at least six feet in height, which does mean that the perimeter of the development site does need to be properly enclosed. And then all ground-mounted systems and collectors will be limited to a maximum height of 25 feet from the ground when oriented, maximum tilt. So they sit on a pentagram, and they track, lots of them track the sun. So you've got these large panels that tilt throughout the day, and so when we're talking about maximum tilt, we're talking about when it's at full tilt collecting sun, that the top of that panel will not be any higher than 25 feet. And that onsite electrical interconnections and power lines will be stored underground wherever reasonable and practical. And you have to build substations for some of these facilities, so there will be some power substations associated with larger photovoltaic systems, but the wires and lines that lead from the individual collectors to those above-ground elements are what we're talking about having to have buried. We also look at having the applicant provide proof that there won't be any glare from the use that will have any adverse impact on the mission interest, motor vehicle traffic, neighboring properties, so there will be a glare assessment that's gonna have to be submitted as part of the application. The type of photovoltaic cells that you'll see in our community are the black ones. These aren't mirror collecting systems that you may think of when we talk about solar collections. So the glare analysis is really gonna be whether or not those particular black surfaces are causing any glare to traffic. If there aren't mirror systems, that we're probably gonna see in this community. For any locations that are within five millimeter miles of Shaw Air Force Base, Shaw at Electronic Combat, Point Set Electronic Combat Range, and the airport, the applicant is gonna have to provide documented proof of having notified the Air Force Base and Electronic Combat Range Commander, all of the commanders represented, and they're the Central County Airport Director if this system is being proposed. The applicant will allow 21 days for written comments to be provided from those agencies, and any written comments will have to be submitted with special exception application. In 2016, that timeframe was listed at 14 days. After talking to Shaw and understanding our current operations tempo in the community and the availability of people to respond, they were of the opinion that 21 days does actually allow sufficient time to get a response without artificially truncating that timeline to just two weeks. It will also have to be demonstrated by the applicant that the system will not unreasonably interfere with the view of or from significant factors of public interest, such as parks or historic sites or other cultural resources. And then they have to have written documentation of agreement with electronic utility provider that they do have interconnection for the project once the facility is completed. After that interconnection agreement, they wouldn't actually be able to tie into the grid. The way that the current regulations are written is asking for that agreement to be in-hand and executed before they get approval. That's just not the way the process works. Interconnection agreements don't actually get executed until much further in the process, but it is reasonable to ask for documentation that the electric utility provider will allow them to interconnect if they get the approval through the process. And then we want that executed agreement before they get their final certificate occupancy once they get to that point. Then we added some language about landscape buffering, being a minimum of 50 feet wide, containing evergreen vegetation and screening required to obscure the facility from the perimeter of some public right of way, and residential use of some adjacent parcels with the minimum criteria. Where money be existing with mature vegetation will be maintained on the property within that 200-foot setback, undisturbed, that vegetation should be supplemented to ensure a year-round visual screen of at least six feet in height over three growing seasons and not less than 20 feet in height of maturity. Where existing vegetation is insufficient for the required screening, a planning plan will have to be developed and submitted, it creates a year-round visual screen of at least six feet in height over three growing seasons and not less than 20 feet in height of maturity. And it will be the developer's responsibility to ensure that the blackwood plants remain healthy and froth thriving. We didn't think that it was prudent to require irrigation as part of these projects. It's just not practical when you're talking about the amount of distance they're covering, but it should be the responsibility of the developer to ensure that what they plant stays alive. And if they do not replace dying or diseased plants, or states that fail to thrive, it would constitute a violation of the zoning ordinance and could result in enforcement action in accordance with Article 1 of the zoning ordinance. As with all enforcement actions, our goal is compliance, so we would work with the applicant to ensure that these issues get addressed before we would have to write any sort of tickets or take them through a court action. Also, for primary photovoltaic systems that are developed in agricultural or conservation, preservation zoning districts, the site should be designed and developed using native brown cover, vegetation, and other best management practices that are outlined in the technical guidance for development of wildlife pollinator habitats and solar farms as issued by the South Carolina Solar Habitat Act from March of 2021 documents or similar best practices documents. There is a solar pollinator program that they can voluntarily join through Clemson Extension. It's a very time-intensive commitment that, at the end of the day, is a voluntary program. What we're asking them for is to take some of the best management practices that are established in that program and utilize them on our agricultural and rural sites. And then when we get to the nuts and bolts of the decommissioning plan. So with decommissioning plan, they have to have satisfactory completion of the decommissioning plan for Appendix D of our ordinance in the staff reports. The copy of Appendix D has a pen that is there, which outlines what the decommissioning plan states. It has to be recorded, with counter-registered keys, and included in any leasing documents or agreements with the property owner. And then we look at decommissioning surety. The surety should be 125% of the entire cost of decommission of the primary photovoltaic facility as approved and required. The decommission cost will be estimated by an engineer licensed to practice in the state of South Carolina, and that plan will be approved by the county administrator and the county attorney. We do note that the salvage value or recycling value of the system or the system elements may be taken into account in the cost estimates for decommissioning. The surety does require to cover the cost of decommissioning the primary system, and it should include all of the work that's described in that Appendix D decommissioning document. And then the surety needs to be in the form of cash, cashier's check, certified check, a certificate or deposit. It can be a negotiable U.S. Treasury security, a performance bond, a irrevocable letter of credit, or other instrument that we can write into cash at face value. We are asking for actual financial tool, not just a written agreement from the developer of actual money in the bank, so if something happens, that the county can act on taking that money and renewing the facility if necessary. The surety can be made directly to Central County, or can be placed in escrow with a financial institution designated as an official depository of the county. Following the [inaudible] the surety, the cost calculations should be reviewed every five years. Initially, we were looking at reviewing it every year, but after talking to some industry professionals, they said five years is really the point at which you should reevaluate the cost, especially considering that we're asking for 125% of the value. So any year-to-year fluctuations in that five-year period should be covered by the 125% bond. Well, after that five-year review, it can be adjusted accordingly based upon an updated estimate provided by the engineer licensed to practice in the state, and they have to review and approve by the Central County Administrator and the Central County Attorney. In the case of the cost increase, the sure against remit used must be updated to reflect that 125% of the entire cost of decommissioning the primary photovoltaic facility. And any failure to comply with requirements outlined in that issue above could result in immediate termination and revocation of prior approvals and permits, and the county will be entitled to make immediate demand upon that surety or obtain the proceeds of the surety in order to decommission the facility, whether it's in operation or not. We did modify the definition of the primary photovoltaic facility to include letters where it's seen green, which include battery storage facilities or other accessory power storage features. In 2016, when the ordinance was originally written, battery storage wasn't part of the renewable industry. Batteries have gotten better, they've gotten more efficient, and they have become a major component in photovoltaic facilities. So we felt it prudent to address the locations of those as part of a primary facility. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. We believe that the proposed changes address a context-sensitive incorporation of large-scale solar integral areas. It also provides now with a public notice for property owners as part of the approval process. I know that was a lot to go to test, but I've been answering questions that you may have.
I would move for first reading, Jim, and thank you for all of your efforts on this one. Second. Yeah, I'll second if I got a question. Good. I thought we had talked about the size of them. Is that, that's not part of them? The 125%, are we all legal standing with that? Ask me more of the cost. Short answer is yes. Short answer, okay. If you're asking a question, I've got to pursue, so. Okay. Thank you. Second. Yeah, second. Motion to a secondary program discussion.
I will tell you, I've talked to several attorneys that work in the solar industry as part of vetting this, and they had no qualms with any of our decommissioning language.
Are there other counties, are there other counties who they have considered as degree?
To date, not that I'm aware of. We actually had to go to North Carolina to find model ordinance language. It addressed a lot of the concerns that county council brought up. We're just now seeing solar power in the state of South Carolina moving into the next tier of counties that are much more populated. I suspect that you're going to see other communities look at altering their regulations as they get closer and closer to larger population centers. There's also several things that are happening at the state level that at some point may preempt our local language, but given the intervening time period absent our own regulations, we would have no basis to compel removal of a facility if we don't look at changing our regulations. But there are things that are happening at the state level that are gonna take some time to get through that process, so in the meantime, we are allowed to address them locally.
Just one other question. I noticed that you used the terminology harmony when it comes to them fitting into their surrounding areas that they might be developing in, and how would that be regulated?
Generally, from a land use standpoint, we look at mitigating the impacts to adjacent uses based on setbacks and buffering. Because these are unmanned facilities, they're really just equipment sitting in a field. There's a big difference between driving up, and I'm gonna take you back this. Driving up and seeing this, because there's nothing blocking it from public view, versus imagining that- imagining that sitting behind a 50-foot-wide evergreen buffer that has heart-large heights. I mean, if they're designed and they're implemented the right way, you drive by them and you don't really know they're there unless you take a really hard look. So that's really from a range perspective how we would address harmony. It's not an industrial use that generates large noise patterns. It's not a large traffic generator. It's just, in some people's opinion, a visual blight. And so to address that, we look at implementing landscaping standards specific to the sun buffering requirement.
And the last thing, seriously, the last thing. You mentioned the little mechanism that it will have that will be there to attract the sun.
They're on tracking system. They're actually oriented to catch the sun based on the site bids, and they're spaced a certain distance apart so that each panel can move. Pardon me. Can move. And you'll notice, these seem like really large, wide rows apart from each other. That's because right now they're not parallel, but they kind of, like a teeter totter all day long, track the sun. And so they have a system that kind of tracks the sun throughout the day that informs them. So you may drive by at 8:00 in the morning and it's a opposition, and at 5:00 in the afternoon, it's another.
I mean, does that consider that possible glare? And you mentioned.
That is included in the glare analysis. They have to look at all of that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed. Thank you, Ms. Rudman.
Thank you.
Did you get a swallow of water? Audience number 23991.
This is working really fast today.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Council. This is a first reading by Kyle O'Leary, ordinance 23991. This is an order to authorize a amendment from the existing payment of tax agreement to allow expansion of the existing industry. I'll begin to take his questions. Motion approved for a reading. And then move the property second that we have questioned, and we'll order this number 23991 to discuss. Any none in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Resolution 2305.
2305 is a resolution to continue to negotiate a payment of tax agreement with a different economic development project known as Project Black Nickel. It's just a resolution to engage in good faith negotiations. And in conjunction with that, you'll have ordinance 23992, first reading by Kyle O'Leary on the same project.
Move over. Second. Move the property second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. And audience number 23992. This is just first reading on the orders to approve the payment of tax agreement. You'll have a full, you'll have a payment of tax agreement reviewed, set up. Move forward, move forward for a reading.
Second.
Move the property second, that we have first reading on the ordinance number 23992. Any discussion? Any none in favor, please say aye.
Coming out to committee reports, fiscal, tax, and property committee meeting did meet today, all members present. We went into the executive session to receive information on those two economic development projects. No action was taken. Land use committee meeting.
Land use committee did meet this afternoon, all members present. First item, Councilmember Baker recused himself from the first item under discussion. And out of that discussion came a motion in a second from the committee to send to planning commission requests to allow auto salvage in light industrial warehouse under special exception. And if you listen to Ms. Rudman mention all these things, she mentioned that special exception applies to solar. That's apply also in this situation too. And it also, especially as we go to the BZA also, where public hearing would also take place at that point, probably would have an input there. And BZA can also make changes or recommend changes at that point to different things too. So that's a motion in a second from the committee.
Now the motion in a second. Any discussion? Any none in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed.
Our second discussion was supposedly we were going to discuss our county landscaping ordinance, but we didn't have enough material with us to really get started, so we're going to delay that until our next land use committee. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
One question. Ms. Hughes, on the first issue, the community component of the partner.
As a special exception, it will be. Oh, the other item yet that we did mention, yeah, we did also mention that in committee too, that we were going to contact the attorney representing this gentleman with the request and see if he would be acceptable having a meeting with the community, a public meeting with the community. All right, thank you.
Coming out to report from council members of the meetings, trainings, and our conferences. May I remember monthly reports, Mr. Reddick?
Councilmembers, the screen is trying to update itself, so I'm just going to go through them real quick. If you have any questions about the Chamber of Commerce, State of Education, please give me a call and I'll try to register you for that, but it is this week. Public Works monthly report is there, Sheriff's Department monthly report is, Sheriff's Office monthly report is in your packet, and the Planning Commission monthly report and upcoming meeting is also in your packet. And the Chamber of Commerce legislative breakfast information is in your packet for that. Just hit me a call and I'll go over those for you. Thank you.
Thank you. County Administrator reporting, please.
Mr. Chair, councilmembers, good evening. Just quickly, last Thursday, in our continued efforts with our litter cleanup, we had our county employee quadrant cleanup on the ninth, and we had approximately 50 of our employees show up to clean up Britton Road, very successful course to more employees. We have out there quick that pickup goes, but we actually had a couple of the community members, citizens actually stop and thank us for what we were doing. Matter of fact, one got out and took pictures of the group. So they're excited to see us doing our part and hope that will encourage others in the community to participate in similar activities. Plans are already being made for quadrant four cleanup, which would be north of Highway 378 and east of Highway 15, that quadrant of our community. And we're looking at early spring, we'll have more information to follow on that particular activity. So that's.
Thank you, Mr. Please. Coming down to the public comment portion of our children, citizens desiring a screen to a public comment. Limits up to three minutes. Comments can be made through the chairman. There are any questions, they will be asked after the meeting. Public comment portion of our attendance now open. Anyone wishing to address council, please proceed to the podium. State your name for the record.
My name is Louis Watkins.
Been gone for a long time, Louis.
Yeah, I had to take care of my health first, all right? I just wanted to say that I couldn't wait to come back to one of these meetings because a lot of information, the path to this, the body, and also I know the hard work that goes into making this meeting happen by everybody, administrators. I've been on the other side, so I know how hard it is. But I still have to say that until 1966, meetings like this was not open to the public. And Congress passed a law, the open meeting law, that made it mandatory that every state adopt a version of the law and allow everyone to be a part of the meeting. So now everyone have an opportunity to come to the meetings. Not much has changed in terms of how the meetings run. The meeting still is a meeting in public rather than a public meeting. And I said that to say that all of the information you have, we don't have. We come and we listen to what the presenters. Ms. Rudman, she does a very good job of explaining everything. But we don't have anything, no handouts, no one comes to present. And maybe a public hearing, I know that is an opportunity to, it's an opportunity for us to be involved. But I'm just saying that we are limited, you on the other side, and you take time out of your business schedule to come to a meeting. This agenda, I believe, has never changed. I know the city council agenda, you go back 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, it's the same agenda. Nothing has changed about the agenda. Even the explanation of the items have not changed. So all I'm saying is that I think the public deserve more information when they come to these meetings rather than to just come. The other thing about the energy, the solar energy, the county and the city budgets, they buy energy from the power companies. And in some cities and states, they have solar panels on the streetlights. Most city and counties are going green. They have departments that deal with solar energy to provide to their facilities, and hopefully, city or something, county, and the county or something will be able to get on board. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Welcome back. Thank you.
City of Council, Mr. Chairman, council members, staff, visitors, public. Name is George Bates, the neighbor who will be here, and God willing. I just wanted to point out, I've been coming to these meetings now for the last three, four months, and seeing the creation of this new program for solar generation systems merge into the presentation today that just set me impressed, just totally impressed. Thorough, absolutely thorough. And I just wanted to thank the staff that prepared that briefing on the record. It was just fantastic. I enjoyed it. It was thorough, it was just, it seemed to address everything that I would consider. And I'm an ex-civil engineer through from that little base. I want to thank you people for putting this thing together, getting it out there, apparently according to tonight's briefing, ahead of every other county in the state, and maybe those counties in this state can look to Center County for something that was a model for South Carolina. I want to thank you all again for the work that Mr. Washington, Councilmember Washington, has been doing about the litter and the garbage in the county, and I'm sure that we're just going to get better and better at it. Thank you very much. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Bates.
Good evening, Council. My name is Wilbur Brown. This is Dean Brown, my brother. We both reside at 2544 West Hill Road in Sumter. And over the past years, we've tried to get help with all the flooding from our neighbors. We live like in a little valley. In our road, we spent thousands and thousands of dollars on getting dirt and getting it by yard level. And we don't think that's the right place to mention this, but we figured this is a start. So anything y'all can do to help us or point us in the right direction, we'd be greatly appreciative.
That pretty much covers it. Well, what was the name of the road again?
2544 West Hill Road, Sumter.
It's in between Riven Lane and Kendall. And it's the lowest bottom of the road. Our neighbors to the, I guess that would be to, yeah, the east of us, they have a ditch in front of their house, and when the ditch overflows, it all flows into our yard, which washes everything we put in right back out. There is a swamp across the street from our house, and it's on the downward slope. There could be, I don't know, a culvert maybe put in up front of the road or something to drain it into the swamp, or I don't know.
And down the road from us, there's another culvert. Us personally, in 2015, we went and cleaned that culvert to prevent the houses and the area from flooding. It's a very small part, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, County Council, Chairman. My name is Jackie Hughes. I would like to say that Kingsbury Road has been, the litter has been picked up. I just hope it stays that way, which I'm not convinced it will. But Lewis Road, the King and Cus Road, but then it showed all the litter. And I would like to see if we can get cameras on either one of those roads. It's a shame that people come and clean it up, and before the garbage gets pulled off and bad, it's being littered again. It almost looks like people go walk, drive by and just throw out their, throw out their litter on the side of the road. That's Lewis Road and Kingsbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. None, anyone else? Public comment is closed. Over to gentlemen, second. And move the property second, double adjourned, any discussion?
You all right? You all right? Were you getting up to speak? She was getting up to speak. She was moving slow.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Willie Little, and I live at 1051 Dyker Street. And when we annex into the city, part is annexed into the city, part of it still be the county. We have a problem with the garbage and everything, and it looks bad. They didn't notify us and say they weren't picking it, because you got to take it to the landfill. And I want to know what can they do to come and pick up that garbage and stuff and take it to the landfill, because those old people don't have no transportation, and we didn't know about it, and let them know that you couldn't do it. And Mr. Green, you can come over and see us, okay?
I was wrong again in the address. It might be Mr. Bates.
You don't want, don't make no difference. You might have to get something done. The litter's bad.
We will.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Little. We're just. Little, Little.